So I'll call this um time I will have a select board meeting to order for Tuesday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Um in attendance is Jake Thompson, Leslie Dyer, Don Young, myself. Donald Poole is absent. Elizabeth is not here. She's absent. And in her place, Gabe is just here to operate the um. She's the tech. She's the IT lady and Madri Stratton Town Manager. I should say just because that's a very important. Alrighty, so um prove the agenda.
Can can we move the um the aquaculture up to after speakers from the floor?
That is up to everybody else, I guess. Doesn't matter to me. Whatever anybody thinks.
I think that's what some people are here for.
Do you want to put it as?
I just thought we could just take it out of order and do it.
You want to move it up to um?
Double second.
Well, where where do you want to move it to?
Just after after we do speakers from the floor, then we'll just put it there.
Put it there.
Is that? At six, so it would be like seven, six A or something. I don't know.
Do you want the Hurricane Island up there too? Because that's David. Yeah.
Yeah.
PC.
Why don't we? Can we move eight ahead of seven? How is that? That's what I should probably say.
Okay, just let's let's.
Swap seven and eight.
Let's swap seven and eight. All right. Second. All those in favor?
Move that we approve the agenda as a minute.
Second. On favor. Who's the minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two select board meeting?
So moved.
Second, all favor. Proven sign treasure smart number nine.
Do you want to sign the signature immediately?
Um, there's two. Don's got to sign that one.
I make a motion that we approve.
Second. There are two pages, Leslie. Second, all favor.
Assume Don's in favor since he's signing it.
Oh, number five. Do you have communication? Any communications? I have none. Six, speakers from the floor.
I don't think Don's done the design. That's.
Being none. So we will go to seven. What um we move seven. Eight to seven. So all business model aquaculture development moratorium ordinance.
I turn that off. It's a little.
Oh, sure.
Kind of hard.
I was just trying to get some air.
Maybe if it's just turned down, I I it's kind of loud in my.
It is loud.
Um, thank you.
So I don't know who wants to um start. But David wants to speak first, David. I don't care. It doesn't matter to me, but I would just like. I would just like us to be able to um just one at a time, you know, don't interrupt each other. And if you have a question, um, raise your hand and we'll do it that way. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. So does anybody want to start? David?
Um, sure. Thanks, everyone. I just want to, you know, I'm I'm here kind of in two different capacities on two different matters. I think what you guys have before you here is is a legislative proposal um from Protect Main's Fishing Heritage. Uh, and that's an organization that I do some work with um elsewhere. Uh, and so given my uh, and our firm's role as the town attorney, I'm not here advocating one way or the other on whether Vinyl Haven should move forward with legislative approval uh or this sort of legislative uh proposal. But I did want to make myself available to answer any questions that you might have. So that's the kind of the capacity in which I'm I'm here.
Okay.
So we've been asking some questions about like what we can actually do as a town. Can we designate certain areas off limits? Can we designate certain types of leases off limits? Can we designate certain species off limits? We just, we don't know, really know exactly what we can do or if we can do anything as a town. So um we thought, Crystal thought maybe you could just as a lawyer, tell us some of the things that were allowed, I guess.
Sure. And um, you know, I I'll start out by saying that um the easiest thing to start with is probably the thing you can't do. Um, that's the thing that's clear is in terms of this landlord tenant decision, what I think of is the the state of Maine deciding whether they want to grant a lease and let someone have kind of an exclusive exclusive use of a postage stamp of the ocean for aquaculture. That leasing decision is something that only the state can do. And 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 the reality is that regardless of what you do um to regulate aquaculture within your municipal boundaries, the state's probably going to continue to do what they're going to do. So but like anything else, you you know, for someone to operate a business like that, they have to both have the property rights to do it. In this case, it'll be from the state and uh, and whatever necessary approvals. Um, and those might be um state, federal, and potentially municipal. Um, so uh, those are all good questions. And and the answer is that um towns have broad home rule authority and none of it has really been tested in the aquaculture arena. You may well be able to designate certain areas, areas of the municipality um to sort of zone the ocean. Um, you know, certainly there's express authority under uh the harbor master provisions that extends to uh the selectmen and to the municipalities adopting ordinance that allow you to designate channels for navigation and to keep those free of equipment, including fishing equipment and presumably aquaculture equipment. Separately, there is also express zoning authority for you to zone structures that are in the ocean. Um, and so you may be able to zone certain areas as allowable for certain types of structures. Now, if you exercise the zoning authority, then you have to comply comply with the various requirements to adopt zoning ordinances. So um, you know, the some towns are kind of taking a two-step approach. The first one is to potentially adopt a a time limited moratorium, a temporary moratorium for a few months while they figure out um what their options are and how they might want to approach other uh the other regulations. So that's my kind of, the short answer is, I think all of the things that you proposed are uh potential possibilities. Um, some of them may be more difficult than others, your authority to regulate um uh, certain activities that DMR does when you get down to like which species you can grow or not grow, that you may be encroaching closer to um the uh, the realm of what the state has exclusive authority over. But in terms of regulating structures and commercial activity in a fixed location, including over the water, you're probably a lot closer to what towns have traditional home rule authority on.
So we can't limit like the lease size because the state sets that, right? Like, we can't say we don't want anything bigger than say, five acres. Just throwing out a number there.
Um, you know, it's possible to regulate the size of the commercial activity. So like especially if you do it in a way of kind of like cumulative structure area that their gear takes up. Um, so you know, it's, I guess the you may be able to limit the the size in ways other than limiting a lease size, if that makes sense. It's kind of like, just because someone leases a forty acre piece of land uh, doesn't mean that the town can't limit the size of a commercial building within those forty acres. And so that would be kind of the equivalent approach. The town could take in the aquaculture context. You can't prevent the state from granting a larger lease than five acres, but you um you probably can regulate the uh, the activity that occurs within that lease.
You say probably.
Well, again, um, so if you do the zoning, right, then uh, if you take a zoning approach, then there are requirements, like it has to be consistent with your comprehensive plan, and you have to follow those various approaches. So so that's a like a a fact-specific analysis that the town, you know, could engage um someone to to look at. Um, and then uh, you know, there there are certain there are going to be certain things that the state is going to say, you're too close to what we do. Um, and the reality is that there's probably a difference of opinion between the municipal bar and the lawyers who are advising the Department of Marine Resources about where exactly that line is. And a court hasn't ruled in, ruled on it yet. So you know, I just want to be careful and I don't want to say that something is entirely clear um, where there are gray areas. There are certainly some clear areas, as I indicated, there's express statutory authority on keeping open channels. And there's express statutory authority on regulating structures in and over the water. So there are some things you can definitely do. There are other things that you can um, probably do. And then there, and then depending on the approach a municipality takes, there are procedural requirements that you'd have to comply with.
Martin.
So I'm always thinking about this from administrative point of view naturally. So we right now have a hearing and um have a vote on whether the, you know, have a town vote on whether we want this uh aquaculture development moratorium ordinance. This is for a hundred and eighty days. Um, I just feel like this town has a lot on its plate in the next year or so. So my question to the board would be, you know, how important is this to you? If it's that important, then fine, make that decision. But at the end of this hundred and eighty days, even if this moratorium ordinance passes, then there's kind of an expectation that you will develop an ordinance. You know, I don't really want to develop that ordinance. Who's going to be tasked with doing that? Would you form a committee to do it? Um, so these are the administrative things that I think about in going forward. I mean, you, I gave you a list of things that we have on our plate in this coming year. Um, I guess the biggest thing is our big uh construction downtown project. So I guess the thing that I would think about is how important is this to you? Uh, and if it is, fine, but um, that's what I'm thinking about. One of the things I'm thinking about.
Emily?
I have a question for David. Uh, with my understanding, uh, this is on the lane. And uh, I have a twelve farm here in Vinyl Haven. Um, one of the things that I have always understood was that the towns had no authority in state waters. And my understanding is that the intertidal lands are considered to be local, but the submerged lands and the ocean are not.
Um. Yeah, there are nuances to that. So the towns certainly have authority in state waters. You can employ a harbor master. You issue moorings. You um, you keep channels open. Um, and I said that there's um zoning laws talk about structures, not just to the low tide line, but structures over the water that municipalities can regulate. So you have regulatory authority there. The the distinction is um when you, when you consider, when you're in terms of the property rights, that's the way that I would decide make the distinction. Terms of the property rights determination, the state is the uh owns all land underneath the ocean below low tide out to about three miles. Um, and then um, and so when they're granting a private lease to an aquaculture operator, what that is in some ways is that's like a a temporary limitation on public trust rights that might might otherwise exist in that area, right? It gives the less see the lease owner some exclusive rights there to exclude certain uses. Only the state can do that below the low tide line. A municipality can do it in the intertidal zone because there's statutory authority under the aquaculture leasing statutes. And so in the intertidal zone, the state doesn't own that property. It might be the, a private landowner that owns the intertidal zone. Uh, and it often is. But even when a private landowner owns the intertidal zone, if there is, if a municipality meets certain conditions, like you need to have a a a shellfish um committee uh and meet the other requirements of the statute, then the um the statutes delegate to the towns the ability to exclude um other public trust uses, including, you know, a fishery or the public trust rights to harvest the wild, you know, kelp or um or rockweed or uh or shellfish that might be in that inner tile zone, if that makes sense.
I also have one other question.
Go ahead.
Um. When you at the uh in section one, model agriculture development moratorium, uh, you reference um one of the moratorium aquaculture developments defined as construction or operation of a commercial facility on, in, or over means coastal waters. Um, you group submerged lands and intertidal together. We've already discussed that. So it's the culture of finfish and nets or pens or other influence you score for the suspended culture of any other marine organism. And then you go on at the end or at the end of the the paragraph. This would temporarily defer all large-scale offshore vertical finfish aquaculture development. Is this strictly for finfish or is this also other types of aquaculture? Because.
Um. Yeah. And so um, the I just want to start out by saying, you know, the the model moratorium is something that can be a starting point for town. So you can decide on whatever the language is. But that language gets at not just finfish. It could um, it could be changed, but that gets at the suspended culture of marine organisms, which is what the DMR statutes, how they approach um shellfish and uh and uh kelp and other seaweed aquaculture. Uh, the distinction there was that uh, was a distinction between kind of land-based and water-based aquaculture. The land, you know, there are some land-based projects that are going on in the state, and they are subject to a bunch of environmental laws and rules at the state level, the Natural Resources Protection Act and the Site Location of Development Act and those types of things that um, the statutes currently exempt um uh, in-water aquaculture from. And so some municipalities are looking at that as a reason why um municipalities need to step in uh and fill a void where the legislature has kind of created an exemption now that the in-water aquaculture industry has um matured somewhat. Um. So that's what that language is getting at. But again, I also want to just reiterate that I'm not here kind of advocating um, one way or the other, um, given my kind of uh relationship with the municipality and our role as as uh as town attorney. So that, any language, any, anything that the town wanted to do, um, we could work to find the language that got to do that within, you know, within whatever the legal constraints are the town has. But that second provision that kind of discusses finfish isn't meant to kind of limit the broader language in the first part.
Crystal, do you have a question?
Uh, no, I just, a quick comment. Um, I noticed that they, someone said a hundred and eighty days, um, and it's, you can renew it once. And I would just say that, you know, American aquafarms in Frenchman Bay hit people out of the blue. And it was, it's, it's been a heavy lift and we fully expect them to come back. So I just put that out there as a reminder.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions?
Thank you. Pretty much answered everything I had up. I kind of get what he's talking about now. I mean, he's cleared things up for me.
Okay.
So I don't know if he has for everyone else, but I think I kind of understand what he's talking about. On the zoning, we have control over zoning stuff, not.
Right.
And if we wanted to establish channels here in different places, we could probably I mean, the only established channel I assume is the ferry channel. But like, you couldn't have someone build something in the middle of the only way out of Robert's Harbor or some other place like that. I'm I'm assuming that's what you mean by the the part that we can control the water by. Like you couldn't build a dock across some harbor where there's twenty other docks inside and close it off and make it into a lobster pound.
No.
So I assume that's what you, what he meant by those are the kind of statutory things we do. But we've only ever regulated the sands in the harbor for the towns, but we'd have to change some language before I do things like that. I assume. Is that right, David?
Um, yeah, in broad brush. That's right. I mean, there are, you can adopt um municipal-wide land use regulations that are kind of like um, uh, site plan type regulations that don't have to go through all the requirements of zoning. Um, and so you might be able to regulate some structures that way. Um. But uh, yeah, you're, you're, you're right in that, the the harbor master statutes to talk about designating channels and stuff, you'd have to go through that process of of identifying those. And you could certainly prohibit structures that cut off um what the town determines are necessary navigational channels.
Yeah, I don't know. Even if we had a three hundred and sixty day moratorium, like we had enough time to do all that stuff. But it would stop someone from coming in out of the blue and we have nothing, right? No thought project at all. We should maybe see if anyone is interested in forming like some kind of a committee to recommend ideas like Marjorie said. I don't know.
And we, we did mention before taking it to the town and just having a.
Well, they have to.
Well, in order to adopt the moratorium ordinance, there's a public hearing and then a town meeting.
Right, that's what I was hoping to.
It would seem to make sense to be prepared if something does happen out there. Because if you look at it, so I look at it, I made responsibility here as a town is probably to protect the fishing that we have, the lobster. So anything that interferes or limits the ability of our lobster fishermen to fish where their traditional grounds uh, needs some serious thoughtful law with it.
Well, I don't disagree, but I have to think about what Madri said about if we adopt this um number and uh this uh moratorium. We're going to have to have a committee that knows, we're going to have to have some experts on a committee that know, you know, are very well informed. And I, I quite frankly, I don't have much faith in that. Crystal, what did other towns do in terms of getting a committee together?
So we have seven towns now. Some chose to do a committee. Um, the others I have spoken with, and I just put this in the chat to everyone. I said protect, well, I said we, but it's Protect Main's Fishing Heritage Foundation will be offering an ordinance in the next few weeks because people need some help for the very reasons that you stated.
Emily, did you have another question?
You know, just to remind you, you also need to be able to monitor that ordinance. And that's another responsibility that falls on either probably not everyone.
Would be the harbor master, yeah.
And you know, that's the liability to monitor as well.
I will just say one more thing if I can, you know, that um when this hit, you know, people had to scramble really fast. And they are still working on it because we believe American aquafarms is definitely coming back. They've said they are. And if you have something in place, I keep thinking about, you know, don't let the perfect be the enemy of good, and you would be further along than you are now. And there is a ton of foreign investment money coming in.
I think we should wait to see what this ordinance, if they're proposing, looks like and invite the Donald to get back from his vacation and really bring it in.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know if that really makes that much of a difference to have one, the other board member. I mean.
No, but I mean.
As far as.
But then the ordinance will be out before.
When is the ordinance? When does that, when is that expected to be? Crystal, did you say?
Yeah, in two to three weeks, I should have it complete.
Okay.
Be good to look at it for next final decision.
He should be back. I think that um, yeah, this is all kind of.
Well, this is just a fact finding thing. Anyway, we don't have to make any decisions tonight.
Right.
But I appreciate you guys' time and answering um some questions.
So anyway, yeah, I think that's a good idea. We should just wait for you to get that ordinance and bring that back to us. And we could discuss it during the meeting. If you want, Crystal, to do that.
I will see what happens.
So is that what you guys want to do? Just, I mean, obviously, we're not going to do anything right now, but we need to gather as much information as we can. So. Yeah, it can't hurt to see. Go ahead, Crystal.
Uh, no, um, I'm, I just will get it to you as soon as I possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty then. If there are no more questions, we'll move on to the Hurricane Island abatement request. Thank you very much. Thanks, Emily.
So this David wrote this summary that we saw on the email today, the one that's on the screen or who? Someone, someone from the law office. Kind of summarize what's happening. Is that my understanding?
These findings of fact and decision were written by uh David Town and um, I'm sorry, is it Ben Plant?
Yep.
Yes. Um, so this latest round, as I understand it, uh, is specific to an abatement request um, for the I'm sorry. I've got so many papers here.
Well, it's all right, Marjorie. And if it's helpful, I can step in and summarize briefly.
Sure.
Um, and so uh, I know I've met with um various iterations of the board at various times because this has been going on for quite some time. Um, but this, I think people are generally familiar with the Hurricane Island Foundation asking um for tax-exempt status. Uh, and it's become. Yep. And so we had discussions on on the current pending um proceedings, and there are some before the state board property tax review. And there was another that was decided by the Superior Court and that we just filed a brief in front of the law court on. And the issues are all interrelated in front of the state board. So they originally came to the town before and asked essentially for this abatement request. Um, and then the statute provides if the select board take no action in a certain time period, it's deemed denied. So there were meetings that were happening then uh and while those discussions were ongoing and there were some potential settlement discussions, that time period expired and they filed an appeal to the state board. And the state board pointed out that um, so they asked for three years, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty nineteen, that under the statute, the timing was wrong for the twenty nineteen one. So that's the request that they're making here. Um, and in the interim, the Superior Court decision came out in um uh, kind of a final decision that modified your assessor's decision. Uh, and that is up on appeal. So while it's on appeal, there are some rules that prevent it from uh, it's called, what's called a stay of execution. So while it's on appeal, the law is clear that Wes's originally, original unmodified decision still stands until the um uh, until a final decision by the court. Uh, until a final decision by the court. And the, the central issue here is that in addition to being a tax exempt literary and scientific organization or literary or scientific organization. Um, you also have to own the property. And that has been one of the central issues for the town and every other um discussion we've had on the matter. And so these are drafted as proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law and it's your decision to make. So. You guys can direct any changes you want, but essentially what we did here is we just outline, outline the procedural background. And said essentially um, uh, that um, the foundation doesn't own the property. It's split into two decisions because the way these are assessed is one assessment goes to the um, the Gaston Families Hurricane Island Trust. And the foundation appears to be asking for an abatement of those taxes as well as the taxes that go to them. And so we split it into decisions because um, there are kind of additional reasons why asking on behalf of someone else is problematic.
So uh the request, this latest request for an abatement came on July eighth. So is there a time? Limit on the selectmen answering? Is that the sixty days?
Yeah. So if the selectmen take no action within sixty days, then it's deemed denied. Um, and they can appeal um to one place or the other. Um, the reason to. Issue the decisions in part rather than let it just be deemed denied is because. It's, it's kind of tricky where do you appeal? And the, just helping to figure out the statutes when the state board or the Knox County Commissioners get the appeal. Um, I think having the procedural background spelled out for them uh would be helpful. But you have to, if you don't act within sixty days, which is, I think, just after Labor Day, it's. Just deemed denied without any reason uh unless you go to the taxpayer and ask for um additional time. Um, but the only reason that would make sense to agree to that or to go to the taxpayer to agree to that is if. There was, if the select board thought it was likely, they were going to come out differently, I think.
I have a couple more questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So um, I, I tried to go back and read as much as I could about this case. Um, I guess I'm just asking, since this has been going on since twenty nineteen. I mean, what is, what is the town's gain? You know, the money received as opposed to the money spent? Why should we keep proceeding with this? In terms of the, you know, the expense involved?
Are you talking to David?
Yes.
So certainly uh the town at any point can decide to uh to stop. Um, proceeding. Um, I think, you know, the town decided to appeal to the law court. Um, and those briefs are already filed, so. Um, you know, the only thing remaining there is the oral argument when that gets scheduled, which will be pretty short. And that it's probably worth regardless issuing these decisions to kind of preserve. That issue.
So the board of selectmen did vote to go to the law court? Okay. You did do that. Okay. I'm sorry. I said, I'm just trying to catch up a little bit. Uh, and then uh Wes Robinson is here. We were talking today and we had a question about going forward since superior court now says. Their ruling is that it is a uh literary or scientific entity or whatever the proper term is there. Then how do we assess it for the current year? Do we assess just the buildings? Uh, or just the employee housing? I mean, what do we do for twenty twenty-three? The, the commitment that we're doing right now based because of the uh superior court decision?
Um, so I can't tell which way you're looking, so I'm gonna assume you're addressing that question to me again.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know where to look.
That's all right.
Well, I can remember, I can remember us talking about this, the settlement and saying that. We thought the only things that they were entitled to an abatement on, if they were the scientific and literary, were the buildings that they used for the thing, which is what Wes has been billing them. Billing them for minus the employee housing before. So I would assume that would be our stance still is. That if a judge said they are a scientific organization, that they're probably, that six hundred and fifty ish, is that still the number thousand? I think that's what I read. Of the assessed buildings. I don't know what's taxed on that. It's eight thousand would still be, I would assume that would be tax exempt for this year since. They told us it was, but that was just my understanding from how we've been dealing with it in the past.
I don't know.
Yeah, so it, the statute allows the um. The municipality to assess aga- against either the owner or the party in possession. And the town's past practice has been to assess the buildings to the foundation as the party in possession. And everything else to the owner. The town could continue to do that if they were to do that. Um, then uh. The, then, or the town could also assess everything to the owner. That would seem to be lawful under the statute. Um, the, I think the, the. The issue about how to treat the um, the superior court decision when it's on appeal. Um, is a little bit more complicated. It's actually spelled out a little bit and briefly in a paragraph in each of these decisions. If you scroll down. And there's a rule that essentially when you file an appeal. Um, of a superior court decision as the town has done, then there's a stay on the execution of that decision. And so. That means it is essentially that no one can enforce it. And when, as here, there's kind of a, there's the executive, the, you know, the. Um, the tax assessor and the executive branch issue makes a decision, the lower court. Um, modifies that decision and then the lower court's um decision is put on hold during the appeal. Then because of separation of powers issues, essentially the, the executive's decision, which is the assessor. Uh, remains unmodified during the pendency of the appeal. So the town. I think could, you've got three choices. Proceed as you've always done, um assess everything to the owner. Uh, or assess uh or don't assess, treat the buildings as exempt. You could do any of those three things that, that. Um, you chose to do lawfully under the statute, I think.
Why would we even consider uh not to the owner? Because if you, if you buy a good piece of property, you lease it, the owner still pays the taxes. Why would this be any different?
Yeah, I mean, that is the, that's the central argument that the town's making on appeal. I mean. The, you know, at root, the issue for tax exempt properties has to be owned by the tax exempt entity and has to be used exclusively for tax exempt purposes. And it's pretty easy to just say this property is owned by a private landowner and it's used to generate rental income. And why do you treat that differently than anywhere else in the town? So that's the argument we're making to the. Law court on behalf of the town and it would be consistent for you guys to keep doing that.
Right, okay. So. Any more questions, Marvin?
Unless, that, David. If Wes now thinks that they're scientific, you know, would that change anything? I mean, I don't think he's changed his opinion, but.
Um, yeah, so I mean, it is Wes's decision in the first instance. Um. The, the discussion and all of Wes's other decisions were essentially, even if they're scientific, they don't own it. And that's the issue that the law court has to decide. Um, so it's, you know, if the law court decides that issue against us and we've assessed the taxes, I think that it's pretty likely that for anything from twenty nineteen going forward. Um, you, you might need to refund that. In that, you're likely to have to refund that in that situation. And so if that changes the way the town kind of budget is, budgets or keeps that money. Um, then that is a consideration. Um, but again, the, we filed the briefs. This shouldn't be a super long, complicated. Issue, so I suspect we will have a decision from the law court within the hundred and eighty-five day abatement period. And the um, and then there's also a three-year provision that allows the selectmen to go back and fix things. If it turns out you're wrong in front of the law court.
Wes, do you have anything you want to add?
No, not actually.
Okay, all right. So um, my question is, what is, so what are we, um, you know, we need to approve?
So the motion would be to approve and sign the findings of fact and decision for Hurricane Island Foundation Tax Accounts five eighty-two and seven seventy-seven.
Okay.
So move.
Second. Do I have a second?
Oh, yes.
All in favor?
Well, I thought you were second.
You were seconding it.
No, I just, second. I know, I should have said just second, but anyway, question mark.
Yeah, no, that's why, I'm sorry.
All right, so that's.
Vote, was the vote, did you already vote?
Yes, yeah, we're moving forward. Okay. Great.
Oh, you have to sign these.
Is, is that it, David?
Who has to sign them?
We all done?
You're all done with me?
I just had a.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah, you too.
Okay.
I thought that would be okay.
Alrighty, so.
Is there two copies?
Do you?
Obviously. There's this one.
Okay.
And I assume your name must have dropped to the second page on this one.
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
This page goes with the end.
Oh, this too?
When it gets to things, we'll just have to flip it back. So how many more days you got left now, Wes? Well, we appreciate you staying on so we can sort, sort your position out. Oh, yeah, well, we heard, we heard it was through the uh, what do you call that? When you send out the taxes.
Commitment.
Commitment.
And the uh, and the.
Well, we appreciate you, your willingness to help us out.
All right, moving on. Um, committee and department reports and appointments. Seven A, appoint public information officer.
Um, that has to do with the Freedom of Information Act and we don't have one. Um.
Would it be someone on the town?
It's just me.
Okay, all right. I thought you were, I didn't know. I make a motion, we appoint Marjorie Stratton as our public information officer.
Saturday. All in favor? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I thought we were putting it up there. I didn't know that it was gonna be you. That's why I was getting ready to answer your question.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
We should have put that on.
Um, B. Seven B, library trustee resignation, Maggie Olson.
Make the motion, we accept her resignation.
Um, we don't have the status report, correct?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so seven C is.
I did meet with them on the nineteenth and I did get um. Updated um plans for the transfer station, so they're moving forward. Uh, we discovered that we don't have a um DEP license for the transfer station. I don't know why. But we'll have to go through that process.
How rigorous is that?
I don't know.
You would think that we would.
I know, I don't understand.
The landfill that they would have been some kind of permit given. It seems like a major oversight.
The landfill is licensed, right? It's just the transfer station that is not.
What did you say?
The landfill is licensed.
The landfill closure, that's.
Right, but I.
We have that affidavit.
Right, but I just assumed that after they capped it, that we would have had the permit to.
Right.
What's up there.
It's a transfer station.
I mean, that was before you, Tom, made it the first time that happened when I was a kid in high school, maybe. I can't remember. It was in the nineties at least.
Exactly.
I just can't believe that we don't have one.
Okay, any more comments on that?
No.
Um, hopefully everything will be fine. Don't know what they would expect us to do, so. So, um, Millie, Director of Public Works.
Well, hello, Thea.
Hello.
Um, well, funny thing happened last week. The line painters called and said, hey, we, we're thinking we might come out Thurs- this Thursday and paint your lines on your roads.
Okay, so that's a thing.
Yeah, I, I did tell them to omit um parking spaces for the parking lot and uh Main Street. Um, which he kind of wanted to do anyway, but um. Where that project's coming up in the spring.
Right.
I, I don't see any need to spend the money to paint it. Um, so as far as I know, he's coming out either this Thursday or next Thursday, but. Uh, I'm still waiting to hear back from him. He told me he would um call me and if he doesn't call me by tomorrow morning, I will call him.
Millie, will they still do the crosswalks though?
Um, on, pretty much all of the crosswalks that I think we need are done.
Oh, they are, good.
Yep, we, we've done those.
You guys can do them anyway.
Yeah, and we're, and we're, we've been doing them. Um, I had them do the school uh the other day uh last week. And I also had them weed whack all the way up to the school um today to make sure that that's all clear for the kids to start school on Tuesday. Not that I'm excited about that or anything.
No, none of you mothers and fathers are.
No, I don't know. Um. Uh, let's see, um. The mower, which I think we've got pictures, but they appear to be sideways. Um, I, he sent pictures of the mower. His final price was seventeen thousand five hundred. So um I just wanted to come back to you guys because I thought it was gonna be sixteen. Um. He is willing to deliver the mower out here and do training with. Uh, training with us on how to operate it, how to take it apart, put it together and all of that.
That's included in the seventeen thousand.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't.
Yeah, he said he would, he would spend the day following one of us around as well. Um. You know, while we're mowing to make sure there's no issues or any questions that we might have. Um, so uh I guess at this point, I just want a green light from you folks if that's something you're still interested in doing. Um, I know uh funds are tight. Um. You know, Marjorie and I have looked at the budget. I don't know, Marjorie, if you want to chime in. Um.
Yeah, so it's so early in the year. I mean, this is the end of August, so this is only the second month of our budget cycle. But um, there is, in the operating account, there is ten thousand dollars under equipment. Um, and then we have the, about almost three thousand dollars that we would have paid him for mowing. So that's thirteen, you know. There's no other place to take it other than out of operating.
What about when we sell the dump truck? Is that, what was that gonna be? Was that three?
Um, that, that for trade-in value, that was thirty-four.
Included in, okay.
But.
That was already included in that.
That's not in there, no. Um, the sale of the dump truck, uh. Uh, we haven't come to that yet. Um, I don't know. I mean, the trade-in value versus what we can sell it for outright. Um, I do have somebody that's. I mean, the trade-in value versus what we can sell it for outright, um, I do have somebody that's interested in buying it. Um, but I think we need to talk about that price. Um, also, there, I don't know if we, um, there is gonna be. A little bit of money left, um, I believe in the payroll budget for. For us, where we're not getting a foreman. Um, but I don't know. I mean, I would want. Marjorie's stamp of approval on that one, um, to take the remainder of the money. Needed for the mower out of that, and then.
Yeah, well, what we vote at town meeting is that bottom line figure, I mean, we try to stick to the line items as much as possible. As a guide, but. The bottom line is what's voted at town meeting.
That doesn't all have to be used for whatever it says.
Correct, correct.
Right.
I have, I do have one quick question, I mean, it looks like it's been kept in good shape, who, who does the maintenance on the hydraulics and the engine, does he do it himself, does he take it to?
He does, he does a lot of it, and Union Farm does the rest.
Did you talk to them about what kind of shape stuff's in, I mean, just to get a secondhand opinion for?
No, I, no, I did not.
I mean, it look, it looks like it's in good shape from the outside.
I think it is, and anytime there's anything, he's pretty meticulous about it, um, and. Um. There is a bearing or something that has, that had to be replaced, and, you know, he was right on it. He could have operated it, but he didn't want to. You know, until everything was fixed, you know, and a, a lot of, a lot of its new parts, you know, it's. Been rebuilt over the years to almost a new machine.
What's the reason he wants to sell?
His health.
So.
For him? Why does he wanna sell? Um, he has some cardiac problems and is having a hard time. Um, doing, he has to, his doctor said he has to slow down, he has a regular job. Um, plus he mows on the weekends, and he's just wants to give up the mowing.
I think we should. Go ahead and, I mean, it's only gonna take five years just to pay it back, is assuming it will last longer than that.
I hope so. Yeah, I think we should take the opportunity, I mean. I don't know how much a new rig, all that equipment will cost to you, Millie?
Um, I know, uh, I know it's, um, probably the sickle itself would be close to twenty.
Wow, yeah.
You know, not count, not counting the tractor, brand new, and, and he has taken very good care of it, you can tell by the pictures as well. Um, but, uh, you know. To be able to mow more than once a year would be quite helpful as well.
And it comes with delivery to the island and.
And teaching, yeah, lessons, so.
I mean, I, I'd say, I make a motion, if the money's in the budget, that we should purchase the. Tractor.
Motion to approve purchase of roadside mow- mowing equipment from, who is it?
Jamie Oliver.
Yes.
What is it?
Jamie Oliver. Second.
Wait, uh, for seventeen thousand five hundred?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, we should put the person.
So to repeat the motion, motion, uh, move to approve the purchase of roadside mowing equipment from Jamie Oliver for seventeen thousand five hundred?
Yeah, that's not like my motion.
That sounds exactly what Jake said, just like Jake, I second that motion. All in favor?
Excellent.
Great.
I'm sorry to be, but it should be.
No, it should be. Um, do you know when he's gonna bring that out?
Um, I told him I would call him or text him tomorrow morning and let him know our final decision, and then he said he'd make a plan to get it out here. I would expect within the next week or so.
Okay, good. Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, oh, go ahead.
Go, go ahead, Millie.
Um. Let's see, what else do I have, um? Think that's, I think that's really it, um. Like I said, we've been focusing on, I, I did have them, Renee Jones agreed to take that small pear tree down, that was right up against the road. Um, on our cola lane, so that is gone prior, you know, before school starts, we took that down this morning. Um, I think so, as far as I can see, school is close to ready, I'm not sure if the sign works for the crossing, but I don't think it has for a while.
It does.
It does, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I just wanted to, I was gonna have that tested before, before school started, just to make sure it was set.
Yeah, Tucker, Tucker just pushed the button the day before yesterday.
Good.
My house from daycare.
Good, remind me to give him a buck.
Okay, I will.
For, for being our tester.
Yes, I will tell him he's the tester.
Uh, so, yep, go ahead.
The last meeting, we discussed both other trees overhanging, we had the discussion whether. What was proper procedure, and I'm pretty sure that you will find, I don't know if anybody's looked it up yet, that.
I have.
Is it illegal in state domain to have trees overhanging, whether it's an obstacle to traffic?
Um, we cannot touch trees that are, um, any kind of shrubs or decorative trees and plants. And we cannot touch anybody's tree who, um. Uses it as a shading tree.
Even if it overhangs and.
Even if it overhangs, yep. I'm not sure now if the, if the, uh, electric company has more. More pull than we do, um, if it's near wires or something, but, um, we, if people do not agree to do it, we can't touch it. The only thing that we can touch is if we're in a ditch line or working in a ditch line, um, we can clear that ditch.
So if someone has a tree that's blocking traffic in the road, we cannot touch it.
Not according to, uh.
That does not make sense.
If it's blocking traffic.
Right.
I know. If it's fallen over in the road and blocking traffic.
That's, yes, that's a different story.
That's a different.
I'm assuming you mean, you can't take the tree down, but you must be able to trim it back, I mean, exactly. Nice question.
Well.
The way Marjorie read it to us last week was almost verbatim how it says it in the book.
I still would question that with a town attorney, it does not make sense.
So it's a tree that's overhanging?
Well, they can overhang, but they can't interfere with traffic where you in fact would hit it with your car, if you went by it. If, and you were on the road.
Oh.
But it also goes to ornamental trees.
Yes.
I'd question that one seriously, it doesn't, that does not make sense.
Well, it, I mean, that's how I read it in the book, it's.
Has anyone asked the homeowner or the, the property owner?
Of which one, there's several.
Any of them, I guess, I mean.
Um, there are. A few have been okay with it, which is why they've been trimmed back, many are not. Um, which is. You know, that's the problem.
Was it? Are we talking about a specific? Tree?
We don't need to talk about, is there, is there a regulation that says that if you're driving down the road, and there's a limo over the road, and it's gonna hit your car, and you're still in the lane? Does the town have?
That's an obstruction.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, obstruction.
Yes, if it's, if it's within the townway and obstructs passage, yes. I would say that in that case, wouldn't you, Millie?
I would, um, but you've gotta.
It's like a tree.
You do have a fine line on that obstruction, though.
Yeah.
What, you know, what constitutes?
Let me give you an example, the other, uh, when I was town manager previously, uh. If you go up High Street and then you start around. The curve to the left, and there's that hill. You know where I am? There was a birch tree. That was hanging down, it did not fall down, but it was hanging down into the road. So we thought, as, you know, Public Works Department, that we were doing, you know, this property owner a favor by. Going and taking, it was like a little four-inch birch tree, right, we took it down. Well, we got in trouble with this property owner because we took a tree that was not. Uh, it was on private property, so that's just one example of what happens, and you can get yourself into trouble by just assuming. That a property owner would want a branch or a tree or whatever it is taken down.
That's not what we're talking about, so we're talking about not taking a tree down, we're talking about taking any. Projection from that tree that are interfering with traffic.
But it's basically the same thing, because the tree was leaning in the road.
To cut it off as it comes across the road.
But. It, it would be no different than if a branch was in leaning.
I guess, I guess if it was a specific tree that you're asking about, I mean, I don't, I don't know, because I don't know what exactly you're asking about.
I don't, I think it's very clear, actually, we're saying if a tree has a limb that's hanging over the road, and I drive down the road, and I'm gonna hit that tree. And there's another car coming, that car pull over, do I have to stop because that homeowner won't let us cut the branches that are overhanging, we're not talking about cutting the tree, we're talking about cutting the, the overhang.
I don't know, I'd have to see the specific situation before I would say anything about it.
Yeah, I think, I think the unfortunate thing, Dawn, is, is. Uh, every one of them is gonna be a different situation, so, uh, maybe it would be, uh, good next week if you and I could get together and you could show me a couple of these places. Um, and then. We can discuss it and maybe, and I can pop, I can talk to homeowners and see what we can do. Or what we can't do.
Probably is to discuss it with the homeowner, but I'm not in the disagree with that, but I do think we ought to understand the law, and if, if anything, it might be a question for someone's attorney. But I don't think we're understanding the law right now.
Millie, did you happen to go up into the quarry, Lawson's quarry, and look at that tree that? We tried to. Say.
They took it down.
Oh, they did, okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
I just, I was afraid it would fall on.
No, no, I had that taken down. Uh, end of June, I think.
End of June?
Maybe July, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't, it doesn't matter, I just wanna.
It's gone, though, I do know that.
I didn't want it to fall onto a car or something.
No, no, we took it down.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Didn't seem to like the way you tried to resurrect it.
But Dawn, back to that too, um, you know, uh, if you wanna meet with Marjorie and I, we can look at the book and. Um. And, you know, you can read the section and. And, uh, we can go from there, maybe make a plan.
Okay.
If that would work for you, um, just let Marjorie know, uh, when you can meet, and I'll make sure that I'm there, I just can't do it. The rest of this week, it would have to be first of next week.
I'm closing my house, um, when, next Wednesday, so I'm gonna, I'm tired, that's done.
Okay, let's. Any more?
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Millie.
Thank you.
See ya.
See ya.
Um, new business.
Uh, downtown.
Oh, whoops, yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped, downtown project update.
Okay, so. Exciting, or not so exciting, but things, uh, slowly moving along, uh, one of the. I don't wanna call it an obstacle, but one of the things we're encountering is, um. The difficulty of the environmental review process, which has, uh, changed for Northern Borders Regional Commission, NBRC. So I'm working with, uh, someone with Wood, from Woodard and Kern, and with the consultant from NBRC directly, um, to try to conclude that process. Um, we have to put out another, um. Public, uh. Uh, forgive me, I'm not coming up with the, the correct language, there's another public review period, which we, we put one out for EDA, the EDA components in twenty twenty. Um, so this is another thing that we have to put out, which is basically like an ad in some papers that invite people to review the scope of the project. Um, assessing the project from an environmental perspective and what the conclusions are, and it gives people opportunities to comment, and it's just a federal requirement that we do this, so. Um, that has to get done, um, so we're trying to move forward as quickly as possible with that. Um, it does impact our notice to proceed, which is the documentation we need to get funding, like actually be able to bill NBRC. Because, um, it seems there's gonna be a delay in that. We have asked for an extension on the notice to proceed, just to be safe, because I think our. Deadline is the middle of September, mid to late September. So we've asked for an extension on that, um, and we're just trying to move forward as quickly and efficiently as possible with that, but there are. Uh, timeframes that we have to comply with, so no, no matter how fast we are, we still have to wait fifteen days for one thing, thirty days for another thing, so. Um, we're just trying to get that. Taken care of, um, the designs and easements, um, all of that is moving forward. We need to have all the easements in place, um, before we can move forward with submitting the designs, which once we submit the designs to EDA. Then we can, once we get approval, then we can put the project out to bid, we're still trying to put the project out to bid as soon as possible, so we're just. Moving ahead as. As quickly as we can.
Extensions, though, don't they, for?
Um, I mean.
They know it's a government job, and you have to hop, jump through hoops, I wouldn't think that they're gonna.
Yeah, no, a- and I think NBRC is really working with us, they've been really good and helpful and trying to make that work, I, I think with EDA, if, um, just with this. Change in our timeline, um, we just have to note it in our progress reports, which we have, and, um, as long as you're within the start date for the. You know, but it, you know, when you have to break ground, and we're still, we're still fine with that, it's just making sure we're fine with all of the funding sources in terms of when we have to break ground, so. Um, yeah, and, um, ship, you know, I don't think there's any, uh, progress in terms of where we left off from the last update with the ship grant. Um, so, the, I, the last we heard from Brent was that, um, there was supposed to be someone in place, um, to administer that program by. Late August, well, it's late August, so we, we, um, should be hearing something, but I'd meet with Brent tomorrow morning, so we'll follow up and see if, uh, Woodard and Kern can reach out to them, because that is something we do. Through Woodard and Kern, not directly, so. Um, trying to think of what else is, um. Highly relevant, um, I think in terms of, of the business and property owners, people have been notified that we're. Not gonna break ground this fall, we're breaking ground in the spring, we, we're starting our, um, outreach with the business and property owners up again, um, at the end of September, we're gonna do a monthly call with them. Um, at the end of each month, and we, I, I'm sort of holding off on a public mailing, um, until we actually submit the final designs to EDA, because I don't. I don't wanna, uh, put something out that we then have to correct in terms of anything regarding the design or dates or anything, so. Holding off on that for the moment, um, all of the materials we have up on the website are. Up to date and correct, so if anyone is looking for project information, um, it's all up on the downtown project page, and that is accurate, um, according to where we are on the timeline and. Um, budget, and, uh, I think the only other thing with outreach is that we'll do one more, uh, public meeting before the end of the year, again, I'll try to time that around when we put out the mailing, so people are notified about the. Public meeting, and that will just be an informational meeting for people to understand more about the project, the timeline, and to see the designs and to be able to ask questions, um, we've done that in, uh, I would say. Frequently and, um, with the stakeholders all along, um, but, um, we've done, um, I think we've only done two. Two actual broader public, public meetings with the community, so this will be, this would be our third, um, public meeting, so. Um, still just, yeah, just trudging along, trying to get all the ducks in a row, so we can. Put the, put everything out to bid and, uh, be able to start, um, invoicing. Getting some money.
It'd be nice to order pipe.
Or, uh, yeah, it's, I, I feel like, yeah, I'm sort of on the edge of my seat, trying to. I don't know, trying to.
Cutting it close.
Yeah, it's a little nerve, it's a little nerve-wracking, but.
Well, it will all come to them, yep.
Yep.
Any more about that?
No, unless, unless people have questions. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, I don't want to know anymore. Too nerve wracking. It's like, is this really gonna happen, it's just, and you know it's going to, but it's just.
Yeah, someone a- asked me, well, it's funny, because I saw Will today and he asked me um how the project was going. And um I said, oh, it's going great, um someone asked me, um what's the, what's the hardest part of this project? I haven't gone there yet. Really easy part of this project right now.
Yeah, well, it'd be great to get started, so, all right, um new business. A tax acquired property, Unleaked map thirty lot zero four.
So uh this was a foreclosure that happened in March of twenty twenty. Uh I gave you a little map to kind of show you where it is, uh it's in the middle of a piece of property owned by Peter Warren. Let's see.
That piece that the um.
Yeah, no, but the only thing I have about this is, don't we always put these out for like a sealed bid, like every time we do it?
It doesn't, well, as I said here.
I know I've done it a couple of times, but I just don't know.
Yeah, it's a, it certainly you can, uh I did put what was voted at town meeting. Uh here in the second paragraph in Article forty seven. It authorizes the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to dispose of real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes. On such terms and conditions as the board deemed advisable, but certainly if you wanna do something different. You know, it allows you.
I think if if he wants it, I think we should sell it to him. What other?
Yeah, I, well. It wouldn't seem, yeah, it wouldn't seem likely to me that somebody else would want it, but then again, you know, if you have any local knowledge about it. It's valuable.
That's the, this is the state beach road right here, right here, and then cemeteries are in this one, so it'll be. I mean, it's almost.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought, just.
I can see why Peter would want it, but I really wonder if we should public notices it is up. I mean, if that was the case, the piece of property that was beside my house, when I bid and lost the bid, then I had to buy it off the person that got it. Why couldn't I have just made an offer to the town to buy it, I mean, I didn't know that's how things work.
Well, it probably depend on wh- how the vote went at town meeting that year, because I know from. When I was here, it used to say that we had to post it for three weeks and then it went out to bid, it was a fairly. And and that was stated at town meeting in the town meeting vote, that that's what the selectman had to do, so I don't know how long ago it was, but.
What's the right thing to do?
What is the?
In my opinion, if. I would vote to um let it, let Peter purchase the piece myself, but.
But the value is what and the price is what?
Well, I guess my goal would just be to get it back on the tax rolls.
I just think we should put it out to bid for however long we usually do it, because that's what, how we usually do real estate, but that's my. That's my only thing, because we, we've always. It's not always, but the last four or five years since I've been on here, we always, for any real estate, we always put it out to a closed bid and then. I mean, we've done that on ambulances and stuff like that too, so that's just the way I thought we did things, but I mean, I could be persuaded either way. We should be consistent with our actions and that, and this right here would not appear to be consistent for me. That's the only thing I'm worried about, but I. I would assume we'd bid twenty six hundred dollars at at least again, so.
Well, I doubt if anybody's gonna pay twenty seven thousand dollars for it.
I doubt they will either, but I'm not sure the twenty six hundred is the real number either. I make the most, what what is it like a? Do we have a meeting in two weeks, is that too quick of a timeframe to have a big process or?
The thirteenth is our next meeting, September thirteenth.
Maybe we could just say.
I can't get it in the wind this week.
So maybe we can just say by Oc- by our October fourth meeting. I don't know, that's kind of what I wanna do with it, just to stay consistent with what we've done in the past.
Up by the October fourth.
We'll open the bids at the October fourth meeting and. We'll get it back on the patch.
Uh so advertise sale of property. I don't know, what am I, what are you trying to say?
I mean, we.
With the, with the.
Through bid.
Yeah, through a sealed bid process, I mean, that's what we did before, Eric opened them all up and we just took the highest bid, yep, that's what we did, so. And then.
Advertise the sale of the property with sealed bid process, and this is. Just, we'll just say map thirty lot four.
And the bids have to be in by, um isn't it usually Monday at close of business before?
To be October third, close of business October.
I think that's what we did before, it could have been Friday before, I'm just trying to to remember how we did it before.
It's better, I, well.
Because you have to have a closing date, because you can't have someone. Come in right, right, you just have to say, we'll take bids up until October.
Take bids through September thirtieth and then we'll open them on the fourth.
Yeah, that sounds perfect, I just wanna stay consistent with what we're doing, and I know we've always had a couple of days between when the closing and the opening. Do we need to vote on that?
I don't know, so what I have is.
I wanna slide over here and I can just read it.
Oh, sure.
If that, if that seems like a good motion for you, then. Move to advertise sale of property on map. Thirty lot four with sealed bid process, the bids need to be in by September thirtieth, the close of business and we'll open them at our select board meeting, October fourth. That's my motion.
Second. All those in favor? All opposed? Waste water budget.
Well, I've been looking at this uh budget and what I'm proposing is is some increases. The fixed fee um for debt service and capital improvements is forty five dollars per quarter. I'm suggesting that in order to um collect the amount that we need. We should raise that to sixty three dollars per quarter, the fixed charge. Uh the other fixed charge for operating and maintenance should be increased from seventy six to seventy seven. And then also the um charge for. The water charge per cubic foot. Um it's just based on the amount of money that we're gonna need for operations and. In terms of the capital reserve, we need to keep putting plenty of money in there, because there are so many. Improvements that need to be done, both at the plant and in the collection system and in the um pump stations. Uh the pump stations, I've been told, and I may not be using the right language, uh have obsolete, some obsolete equipment in them. And they have to be upgraded, we're trying to do at least one a year, but it costs twelve thousand five hundred each year.
Would it be better to do more than one a year, would you get the economy to scale if you did three or four, would it be thirty thousand instead of?
Well, even with one in the equipment budget and adding more money. To the capital reserve. Sorry, uh maybe I'm not understanding your question, are you saying that we should increase the rates even more and raise more?
Oh, no, I was just curious, like, if anyone's ever asked, like. You know, if we borrowed the money, if it would be cheaper to do all of the pump stations at once, if they're all obsolete. I mean, if someone's gonna come out, wants you to do one pump station, and we have ten, it's gonna cost hundred twenty five thousand to do them all. If we did all ten at once, would it cost, would we save, would we save that much money if we, that's all I'm asking.
Hmm, I must profess that um I would need to consult with Mike Cummins from uh Main Water on details of that. You know, what would be the best course of action?
I mean, I don't know how hard it is to get people, you have to do that kind of work either.
Well, Main Water, their main water would deal with that.
I think what um Mike Ames and Mike Cummins said is that Will did the re- the replacement of the one that we did this year.
So we're just buying the parks then.
A lot of the maintenance and whatnot between wires and well, of the, of the main, main water. Employee would be doing the most of the.
Okay, I didn't, I I mean, I don't know anything, I'm just asking if, I mean, one needs to be changed every year. But if they're doing it on their own, yeah, there's no gain, right, no, so that makes sense to do, spread it out, that's, it was just a question, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm not. I don't know who was doing the work, but a lot of times if you have ten.
Well, as you can see, the um operating costs paying Main Water has gone up. Um and I've also added that twelve thousand five hundred to upgrade one of the pump stations.
You, you were talking about, did you wanna change the volumetric charge from eight dollars to something?
To nine.
Okay, you never, I don't believe you ever said that, you guys talking about that, but didn't say. A change.
So that would um budget wise theoretically give us the three hundred and ninety one thousand three hundred. And the expense side is three ninety two, seven sixty five, so.
And this forty seven, is that what's in fund balance?
No, that's just the increase, that's the, I'm sorry, so that's the thirteen point eight percent.
But we have the other roughly fifteen hundred dollars to take up for the difference in the expenses being.
Right, this is just the, you know.
So that four, the forty seven to five at the bottom is, okay, that's the fund balance.
That's the amount of the increase in the, from last year to this year. It's a thirteen point eight increase in expenses. So budget wise, the expenses are slightly over the revenue.
So bottom line, you wanna increase the water and raise enough to. Pretty much break even, yeah.
Right.
So that should be a simple rate increase on per unit toll.
So each user, uh most um properties are one user, but for instance, the hotel or the. Um some apartment buildings, some.
Say, we just talked about this a lot, we changed like one from two to one and one from one to two, depending on, it's different, you just. That's what the debt charges, that fixed rate.
So there's two fixed charges, right, so that would be instead of forty five dollars per user per quarter. It would be sixty three, and then the other fixed charge, which is currently seventy six, would be seventy seven. And then the volumetric charge would go from eight to nine dollars.
And that would help to cover the thirteen point eight percent increase in expenses, correct?
Right. I don't remember the last time there was an increase, do you have any?
So it'd be seventy six dollars a month, just in the fix, seventy six dollars a year, just in the two fixed costs of its quarter.
It's a quarter.
Right, so I did.
Quarter, seventy six dollars.
And then the nine dollars is just on how much you use, so I mean.
Correct.
The value, right, so you don't know, but it's gonna go up, everyone's bill, if they're a single payer, would go up by seventy six, six dollars a year, but it seems like. That's kind of what has to happen to make the budget work.
Well, since we haven't had a rate increase in twelve years.
Seems like a simple rate increase should do it.
Um, that the other ordinance is that. I don't know if you read through them, that uh we sent, and all the towns, they've rate, have a rate increase every year.
Yeah, but it's probably not, it's probably more like a dollar, it's not like eighteen dollars on this one, like if we've been raising it, right. If we done a dollar a year, it would be basically another dollar a year, because it's been fifteen years, so, so, I mean, I don't think, I don't think this is unreasonable.
It'd be easy, it's easier to, easier to, yes, if we do just.
In the future, we should be cognizant of maybe.
Well, I think there was some, yeah. I don't think it, that's, we weren't cognizant, it just kind of didn't happen.
So we need to make a motion or just accept what you've got.
Yeah, you need to make a motion to approve the wastewater budget and the rate increase as um presented. I probably should have typed up a motion.
I make a motion that we, that we approve the wastewater budget with the amended. User fee increases.
Second. User. Why don't you just do the rate increase?
That's what I would wonder, why are we?
Just do the rate increase.
Yeah, why not? Keep it simple.
I'm sorry.
Just, just instead of naming each thing, just say with the rate increase, don't have to, what did, what did you say?
That's what he said.
I thought you said fixed charge.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, rather than the fixed charge change, just go ahead and change the the volume rate.
Okay, Marjorie, can you read what, what?
I thought that's what I was doing.
So.
I missed, I missed it, you just.
Um, okay, let's, let me.
Well, so the increase, the rate change that I'm proposing is there's the debt service and capital project. Fixed charge, that's going from forty five to sixty three per quarter.
Right.
The other fixed charge is currently seventy six dollars per quarter, that would be seventy seven per quarter. And the volumetric charge would be nine dollars instead of eight dollars per cubic foot.
But I wa- I was curious what you had written down so far for the motion. You had started to write the motion, no, that's fine.
Uh motion to approve. Uh the rate increase and budget for the wastewater, but I I didn't, I did, it wasn't a clear motion.
So do you want Jake to list each debt service fixed charge and volumetric charge or just the rate increase?
I was just gonna do one, that's what I thought, I did, but.
I thought, I thought you did that too.
That makes sense. I thought that's what I said, but I could have been wrong, I make a motion that we approve the wastewater department budget with the rate increases.
Second. Review town office building use policy.
I put this together, because you asked me to, but I'm. I'm not.
There was no, there was no, the only question I had was about insurance, only, did you find out, I mean. Because with this, we were releasing ourselves from liability, right, on the back, it says we're not liable. For any injuries, I I read it somewhere, so I mean, I would think that would cover our insurance though, so.
And. Some people will have insurance already.
Right, but I just didn't want someone coming in here and slipping and falling down the stairs and saying, oh, you know. I mean, if they break, if the stairs break because they're old, that's one thing, but.
Right.
So the only thing we have to do is set up a.
I didn't know how much you wanted to charge people, and I, you know, I have mixed feelings about it, because it's gonna have to be managed. And I don't want another thing to do.
And even nonprofits would have to pay?
No, 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 it's just, it's just that second.
Oh, oh, oh.
On the second page.
Okay.
I mean, what does it work out, what does it work out to that we charge Dr. Karen? Down there. Yeah, we should be.
It was seventy-five.
But we went up to seventy-five, right? It was sixteen, then they went to seventy.
Is it seventy-five per day?
Per his visit, per. He's here every, he's here like every three weeks.
So, so it's a month, basically seventy-five dollars.
I'd say that's what, seven hours, so we're charging like. A little over ten dollars an hour. I just wanna be consistent on what we charge, that's why I was asking. We can't say, oh, we're gonna charge fifty dollars for this room and let him get away with, that's all, that's all I was asking.
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying.
But if Marjorie doesn't. More have to deal with it, I don't know.
Look, there's nothing I'd like better than to walk upstairs and have an exercise class, but. On the other hand, it's who else is gonna come forward? I mean, we had Dr. Karen at one point wanted to be here and, you know, um.
Well, as it says, um, as long as it's not.
Interfere.
Interfering, like you said, you didn't, nobody's gonna wanna have dogs and cats and. You know, that's gonna be.
I guess the.
Disruptive. To say the least.
But that's, that's what the subjective part of it is, what does interfere and what doesn't interfere or anything. That's kind of what you're getting at, isn't it? You don't wanna have to be the judge of. Saying no to.
And also just managing the calendar. Oh, you wanted this day, you wanted this day and it's like. You know, I don't.
Yeah.
Can we just try, can we, can we just, can we just adopt the policy for, for like, for one year? And revisit it in a year and if there's been no issues, we can just say, let's keep it going, or you just wanna adopt it. I don't know. A lot of the things that the state government does have sunsets on them.
I don't care, whatever you wanna do, it's fine with me.
Need a motion.
Uh, what was the amount you wanted? Seventy-five dollars a month?
Seventy-five, I thought it was a day, no?
No.
It's gonna be per hour, so why not just say fifteen dollars?
Oh, yeah, right, right. You can start the care, does seventy-five dollars. Here once a month, basically.
Yes, fifteen dollars an hour seems reasonable, doesn't it? I mean.
Yes.
That probably, that's how much someone charges to probably clean it, so, I mean, they gotta clean it themselves, but. I would, that would be what I would suggest, making it at fifteen dollars an hour for now. But it can always be revisited at some point in the future when. Fifteen dollars an hour.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
That, that would be my suggestion, I don't know.
No comments or anything else?
So I'll make a motion that we approve this. What is it called? Policies governing non-government entity use of the office building. At a rate of fifteen dollars per hour.
Second. And certainly, if it becomes an issue, it can be, let us know, it can be.
Rescinded just as easily as it was put up there. But um, we do, we did need to have something like this on the books before we let people in there.
Oh, yeah.
I'm glad we agreed to it.
Agreed, okay. Um, report of town manager.
So I did hear from um Jake kind of prompted me today and.
Well, what got me thinking about that was that new homestead for sixty-five and how the assessor was saying. How much of a nightmare it was for the ten year and this and that. So I was reading that story in the public and I got thinking, oh, what, what happened to? And I got his name wrong, I apologize, but Travis was, it is Travis, right? I just wondered.
So he said that, you know, he's willing to come out. Tuesday unfortunately is when he usually has planning board meetings. He's a, a code officer in a, in another town. And uh, but he's still, he's willing to come out on a Tuesday, if that's the day that you want. Uh, so he asked just that, you know, that this.
Well, I mean.
What day would you like him to come out?
He wants to come out and review our stuff and then meet with us by Zoom on a Tuesday or. Something, we don't actually have to meet with him in person to read.
No, not if he wants to zoom.
No, but he, he wanted to come out and look at. Cause we wanted some information that he couldn't give us until he looked at. Our books and stuff, you know, the.
He wants to see what.
I mean, just tell him to come at as early as convenience and then we'll try and work a Zoom meeting in and if he happens to come out on a Tuesday when we're. Gonna have a meeting, we'll meet with him in person, but I think Zoom meetings are probably just as good as in-person meetings at this point in time.
But we wanted, we also wanted to know like what his wage requirements were.
Right, but he, but he didn't.
Right.
He didn't know how many hours a week he thought it was gonna take until he looked at some stuff about how much we had done and what. Programs we had, right?
Right, he had questions. He said he wasn't ready to, to put a salary out there because he had questions.
About what, so we need to, we need to get him out here to look at stuff.
Right.
All right, well, I'll say something, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. Uh, I did uh email Sheriff Polkey. And he's very open to having a meeting. He was supposed to get back with me, to me with available dates, but I haven't heard from him, so I really need to follow up. Uh, but the other thing that happened with the apartment is patients called me about. Having more people there and more use of the apartment, cause I guess all fourteen deputies will be rotating out. She hasn't brought it in yet, but she's suggesting an uh increase in the rent. To twelve fifty instead of nine fifties, but I don't have. Her proposed new lease yet.
But it's not, I mean, it's only one person at a time, except for the dog thing, that's the only thing that really changes it, anything.
Yeah, it's the same.
Then it's cops.
Same time.
Right, I mean, I can.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, she wants to get more money, but. I mean, it's not any, any more people in there at one time unless they're bringing their families out or something, are they?
I don't believe so, she didn't say.
It was only.
Does she, I'm sorry, didn't.
No, go ahead.
Did she, does she clean? Does she, was there some issue, like maybe she has to clean? Does she feel the need to, that she has to clean in between? Is that, I mean, I don't know how she runs her place, so.
Well, I mean, we don't really have a lot of options on where we can rent in town where we want the cop to be, so we found it. In twelve fifty, that is unreasonable, so. But it's not any more activity besides the dog that I can say, that's fine.
They'll just be one person there all the time instead of. Three days off or whatever, right? Does, it's this, does this mean?
No, we still have the.
But now we have fourteen different people that are gonna rotate coverage, okay, I get it. So it's still just one person, one with a dog.
So the deputy dog.
I didn't know what to call it. But that sounds stupid. I thought you might have a laugh.
I'm thinking of the uh cartoon deputy, deputy dog.
The canine, the canine.
Um, anyway, the, the dog, is that a, just a, is that a pet or is it like a?
It's a, will they?
Drug sniffing canine dog.
It's a dog.
Okay, that's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So I.
I mean, I can see the rent going up when you have an animal in there too. Cause I mean, but something that's that well-trained, you wouldn't think would stave anything up, but.
Well, one thing.
Never and everything else that you're dealing with. And accidents.
Yeah, the, the lease said no pets. But the deputy that had the dog said, well, it's not a pet, it's a deputy.
Right.
Well, you know, that's.
Yeah, I mean. More and like with Hannah renting her house, they paid a three hundred dollar pet deposit, so. I mean, you could consider it that, it's three hundred dollars more.
I mean, that.
Than it was.
I mean, I think we just have to sign the lease when they bring. I thought the lease was on Fox County side. They, wasn't that part of our new contract? That we'd find him someplace and they signed the lease, not us?
I think you're right. Like, you might want, yeah, you might wanna check that. I was thinking that.
I thought we said we'll give your stipend because some cops have a family, some cops can live in a smaller place and we'll give you so much money a month.
Yeah.
For the lease. And then if you needed a five-bedroom house on the water and you wanted to spend your own money, you could get it, but they were, they were in charge of. I thought that, isn't that in the?
Marjorie, you did get a copy of the contract, right? I didn't read, read that and I. When I read Marjorie's email, I should have gone upstairs and gotten that contract and I didn't, I just kind of.
Maybe that didn't get put in, but we talked about it.
Says the town shall provide a housing allowance. For any full-time resident deputy. Housing rental payments will be capped at twelve thousand per year. And then heating, fuel and electricity will be capped at five thousand. Well, this sounds like what we used to do when, uh, well, like Larry Hazeltine.
Is that the new, when was that dated?
That was the last one.
This is. Through December twenty twenty-two.
Hmm, interesting, because. It's, but well, it's forty hours, it's four days, but it's four hours, so that's considered. Although it's not full-time.
No, I was thinking that Jake was right, that we had, had opted out on that. But anyway, apparently not.
It couldn't hurt to double check.
But it's got the contract too.
Okay.
Well, whatever, so I, I think that we um. We need a place. For him to stay and. I think it's, if they're gonna let him bring deputy dog, then. That's a good thing.
I wonder how is more.
But puts us over our. But we still have money in the line, anyway.
Well, yeah.
I did not check that.
But yeah, we do.
We capped it at ten thousand, this puts us to twenty-five. More than twenty-five hundred dollars over, let's say.
But we have, don't we have money? Because we don't, aren't getting the second.
I mean, it puts us forty-five hundred dollars over. Broke that one off of the budget.
Yeah, oh, we did, oh, we didn't include that in.
I don't know, just, I guess we'll have to make it work. I'm sure there's money in there from what we're not paying and. We kind of need someplace for him to stay, we want him out here.
Yeah, we don't have.
Yes.
But we should, we should. Figure out that language of the lease thing and then.
Where else is it gonna, where else are they gonna go?
Right, I mean, we can't really vote on it now until we get a copy of the lease from patients, so.
Well, usually we just. Tell the.
Yes.
Don't we usually just let the town manager sign those when they come in?
The lease?
Yeah.
I'd have to review it. Um, so I, as I said, I had met with Brent Bridges on August nineteenth. He did give me updated project plans for the transfer station. Anybody wants um copies of that, just let me know. So I'm looking at applying for the fall Maine Bond Bank issue. And I also have to coordinate that project with ordering a new compactor. That money is in the uh reserve. Um, I tried to list out some of the things that are going on in terms of. Ordinances and policies and infrastructure and other things. Uh, it, you know, the list is long and you.
Well, I think.
I guess from my perspective, you might wanna think about what our priorities are in terms of all of the different.
As far as the, the bylaws. Um, I had suggested we wait for DW to get back so that he, we'd have a full board to discuss that. And so that could come up. In October. Um, that in. The ordinances I feel should be in one meeting. All of them should be discussed in one me, well, the sewer, yeah, she was. That's my opinion on those, should have, are we gonna be able to do all of them at once?
Well, we're gonna have to, we may have to meet.
We have a land, we don't we have for the land use. We have the planning commission for that, right?
Right, I'm working with the Planning Commission and um Midcoast Council of Governments are helping us with those revisions, so that's.
Right.
In the works.
And the, and the helicopter ordinance, I thought they.
I don't know what's going on, what you wanna do with that.
I thought it was kind of dead, cause we couldn't do anything, cause the FBI had to go over everything from what. I can remember.
Well, they have jurisdiction, like we said.
Yeah, but on the land. No, they have jurisdiction of where people land helicopters according to what we saw. You have to have like a express site if you wanna land, keep landing there over and over and over again. And it seemed like that was something that we couldn't regulate anyway, but.
Is that something Matthew, would he? Eddie, Matthew Eddie, would that be something that he would be able to help with?
Well, I'd like to keep him focused on the land use ordinance. Um, what? The correspondence that Andy Dorr had with Maine Municipal about it. Um, they kept saying. Uh, and strongly recommending that he consult with the town attorney. On any proposed ordinance. So I guess, I don't think you ever did that.
No, 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 we didn't. Should we?
We just kind of tabled that when we had so many people up here telling us. Different things that we, someone brought this to us, it wasn't something that we brought up ourselves anyway.
Yes, somebody wanted us to write an ordinance. Adopt or whatever, and then.
We found out that half of it was illegal.
Well, I thought that we, I thought that, that we gave it to the, I thought the planning commission wanted us to hand it over to them for review.
I thought so too, that and the quarry, which we've already, we've already finished the quarry ordinance, but yeah. Maybe we should just ask him. If you speak with Wes or someone on the planning commission, can you ask him if that's been something that they looked into? Marjorie?
So you remember, remember that then, that they. They wanted us to send it to them. They didn't want us to pass an ordinance.
Basically a land use ordinance, the helicopter ordinance was a land use ordinance and they, they wanted to look at it as a planning commission, I thought, and then brought it back to us.
And they were quite vehement about it. I do remember, okay, it's coming back to me now, yes, I do remember.
I, I, yeah, they kind of.
Yeah, so I thought that's what we did, we said, well, why don't you guys?
Take it.
Take it and bring it back to us with some. That's where last, we were last.
Yes.
That was this spring or last?
It was this past spring, late winter.
They're obviously working about it, cause it is on Facebook now.
Oh, yes, it's on Facebook.
That's all.
I guess.
So do you want us to make a, a list of priorities out of?
No, I was just kind of putting all that, putting it all out there, you know, just. To make the point that we've got a lot of work to do, um, and if there are things that you want to prioritize. Then.
Can, can I, can I make a suggestion, like Andy, Andy used to. Have us say like one or two things that were most important to us, can we have that? For when D W gets back, so there's all five of us and we can say what we'd like to accomplish in the next. Can we have that on October fourth, and then all of us can come up with. To, Andy used to do that with us and say, what, what would you like to see done? You know, what, what would you like to go, it's not even out of this list, but what, like two goals that you'd like to see accomplished this year? And then we try and figure out how to accomplish them, but I think that might be good, instead of us just sitting here saying. This, this, there's more ordinances and stuff than what you put on here too, that might be a priority for someone else, so. Can we just say on October fourth meeting that we'll. Each come in with two or three things that we'd like to see prioritized or worked on in the next.
Well, certainly, this wasn't meant to be any kind of a structured discussion, I, I guess, uh, um. Maybe I was feeling a bit overwhelmed.
I can see why, well, it's quite a list.
Just, um. Uh, I can structure it in a different way.
No, but that's how, that's how we've done it in the last. We've each said something we'd like to see worked on, you know, and then we try to get it done.
Well, we can check off purchasing policy, we just discussed that. And that one's. Gone, we just, we just voted on that one. Or finalize it, right. But, so that's in the works, the selection bylaws will do in October.
The downtown project is in process.
The policy for use of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Policy for use of town office building, that one we just voted on and passed, so that one can be checked off the list. The land use ordinance is being worked on. Correct, Marjorie?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm sorry, the purchasing policy, we can go back to another time. The sewer use ordinance, is that ready to bring forward?
No, I have no idea what the sewer commissioners really want and I don't, you know.
So we can.
It needs work to work on what amendments. Yeah, it needs work.
So we can have that on our agenda for our sewer meeting and. So we can have that on our agenda for our sewer meeting in October. Okay, could you just make a note of that to make sure we put that on the agenda for that meeting? All right, so that one is. Um, something in the land, some Maggie's working on. Okay, so. Yeah, and then for infrastructure, downtown's in the works. We need to discuss the painting. Got a, of that purchasing policy, I think we oughta just. Let Marjorie hire who she. That we approve who Marjorie wants to hire and not put it out to bid because painting and you're not gonna get any bids. We've got two bids and that's probably. As good as we're gonna get, and if we're gonna have any work done on that building this year, we need to do it right now. So does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Thought we had a discussion last week, if we would look at that one side. And go from there and we didn't decide how we're gonna do it.
Yeah, I can't find any carpenters.
Well, it's not gonna get done this fall. That's for certain.
Well, I mean, what happens if we run into a bunch of boards that need to be replaced when they start scraping it, if we don't have a co- carpenter to replace and then we're gonna be screwed?
Well, I don't always think so, but, um.
Well, I think you're gonna find some.
And this Washington school maintenance has been on the list of things to have done for at least two years, maybe three. With the rot and everything that's been found, so there's another. Um, construction issue, the carpet issue. These other projects are in the works. Amber's Hill project is kind of a. Was something that was in the works, but. Hopefully we'll be moving forward. Amber's Hill Coalition of Collaboration.
And I think the motion that we move on to report of members for something else.
As long as you, I mean, I just wanna make sure that Marjorie's at ease with what we. I don't want, I don't want her to be upset about, you know, getting, that she's got too much to worry about.
Don't misunderstand me, I, I didn't, um.
Think she wants us to think about stuff.
Yeah.
She doesn't want us to throw a moratorium in her lap is what she's saying.
Okay, all right, let's move on then. But you've got something to say.
I mean, we have a list.
No, no, it's just the next thing on the list, do we still have an executive session, I was just curious?
Yes, uh, do we don't?
No.
Okay.
I just want.
I didn't know what's that, okay.
Uh, David Callen said to put it on there in case, case we need it.
I don't know.
Case they won't, yeah, okay, all right.
So report of members.
I have a quick question, uh, that maybe Marjorie can ask. Fireworks permits from the, at night, the, the last few nights, we've had a lot of them, what are we, what can we do about this?
Illegal.
Uh, so, but. We waived the fee. Three, four years ago for fireworks permits, we just wanted people to come up and get them.
Right.
And they're not doing it, I, I. No, but we did, there was a ten dollar fee or something before and we said, all right, we're gonna waive the fee, people, please just come up and get one.
And some people did.
But there's no fee, so it shouldn't. What, maybe we should put a hundred dollar fine for each violation. I'm sure there is a fine, but if you get the cops to enforce it or anyone. Part of, that, that could be part of our police construction. Well, yeah, it should be along with squealing tires and everything else, that's always on that, that never gets addressed. Well, maybe it, it needs to. It does, but we've brought it up. With those guys every time, nothing ever changed.
Right, and like he said, some of the same concerns that are on your list have been on the list for a decade, so.
More than that, yeah.
But yeah, I, I remember one of the emails. About the sheriff's department.
But I think a lot of the times the sheriffs will write these people up and then it gets over to the district attorney and they'll drop it and nothing happens and they. But it's their job to keep writing them up, but they just don't, they just say, well, they're not gonna do anything about it, why should I? Which is not the attitude that we want the cops to have. Their job. That should be brought up too during the meeting, because I've heard him say that before. Yeah. If I forget, if I forget it, you should remind me. If we ever get a meeting.
Right.
Yeah. I, I do think that we should have a meeting with, like you said, with the other people, because like you said, he.
Other, other people?
Wasn't there, didn't Polkey wanna have a meeting with like a? Two other people, didn't you say?
Oh, the chief deputy and.
And someone from the union budgeting committee or something like that, or, I mean, because. Like you said, I can't just tell someone, they have to come out there, so we need to know. If there's things that we can change and things that we can't change, so. We need to make this. Right, that's why he said he would like to have the meeting with those other two other people. Right, so I think that would be smart to wait for at least one of the other people.
I'll follow up with the sheriff.
I mean, we can zoom those meetings, but they don't, we don't.
Exactly.
But yeah, we've had it all here in person, but I mean, wasn't that what his email said, there was two other people on it, I can't remember exactly.
I need to go back and look at it.
But he said that it would be more productive if he had those people with him when he had the meeting, because he only has so much power, you know. I think we should try and schedule that meeting sometime, whenever we can, whenever they can schedule it.
Yes.
But you said Zoom, but you don't want to?
No, no, I, no, no, I said.
Oh, oh.
I'd rather be about the person than on Zoom.
A preference.
Is there any other reports, members? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
On favor?